Hearing being conducted by the Vermont State Board of Education. This day, 6th May, 2020. This is the second of a series of three scheduled public hearings. In connection with the board's proposed adoption of a new rule, 1300, and a modified rule, 2360, with regard to special education, both of which rule proposals derive from the passage of Act 173. We have several members of the state board present at this online or video-based hearing. I know that Jenna O'Farrell is on board, Kim Gleason is on board, Bill Mathis is on board, Peter Pelz is on board, and we believe that Sabina Rochu will join us after she completes another meeting that she has at this time.
Kyle Courtois is on as well, John?
Yeah, I'm here.
There you are, KC. Nice to see you, Kyle.
Thank you, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Good.
So, that's a very strong representation from the state board, and I'm grateful to each of you for making yourself available for this public hearing. The hearing will run today. Let me stop right there and say, this is being recorded, both visually and orally in audio. And so be advised at all times that whatever you say is being recorded. We will go, starting now, we will end at 7:00. We don't expect that there will be public to be heard throughout the entire duration of this three-hour hearing, but we want to be available since that is the time we announced publicly that we would be available. So, some of us, in any case, will stay here until 7:00, in the possibility that somebody might join us later. Before we hear from the first two witnesses that we know of, and there may be others, I want to just update you. I'm getting some feedback now. I want to update you on the status of revisions to the various dates in connection with the implementation of Act 173. The Senate passed, I think it was S343, does that number sound familiar? Which is the Act 173 revision, emergency revision bill. These revisions are all prompted by the COVID-19 pandemic and the shutting down of schools and all of the consequences of that. One element in the bill that we had a hand in advocating is that this public hearing, or this public comment period, will be extended from its originally planned and provided for duration of about six weeks, will be extended over eight months to, and will not end until the 31st of December of this year. And the purpose of that extension, of course, is, as we discussed before, to afford a fair opportunity for interested parties, especially parents of children with special needs, to be able to have an opportunity to testify on the proposed rules. We're hopeful that things might return to something like normal by the autumn, and hopeful that children will be back in school, which will make a huge difference to the parents of children with special needs, whose hands right now are really, really full serving and supporting their children at home. The House Committee on Education has concurred in the Senate bill, including the provision that we advocated for the extension of the public comment period. And somebody out there, perhaps Emily Simmons is online, or one of you may know if the House as a whole body has taken up this bill or not. I'm told that they will soon, but I don't know if it might have happened already.
No, John, this is Emily. I don't have any more information on that front than you do today.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I did not mention Emily Simmons being online with us. Emily, as you know, is general counsel for the Agency of Education, and she's been instrumental in the drafting of the proposed rules, 1300 and 2360. We thank you, Emily, for joining us, all the way from, I think, Mississippi. We have two scheduled witnesses, and I'm going to propose to the group that, since both witnesses have pretty deep knowledge of these topics, that we afford them each 15 minutes to present to us. Normally, it would be five minutes or less if we had a more busily packed agenda, but we don't. And even if others come on, we still think, I propose that we provide 15 minutes for each. Is there any objection to that from members of the board? I guess, in this case, we are not meeting as the board so much as we're meeting as a committee of the board conducting a public hearing. All right, hearing, no objections, then. We will, this is advice then to the two witnesses, that you can plan on speaking for 15 minutes if you wish to. We have two witnesses. One is Greg Van, I hope I'm not mispronouncing your last name, Greg Van Booten or Boiten?
It's Van Booten, thank you.
Van Booten, thank you. I didn't get it right either way. And the second witness is someone we're all very familiar with and I have great regard for, is Marilyn Mahusky, who will speak. So, unless there is other business that members of the hearing committee wish to address, let's get started then with Mr. Van Booten.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for the opportunity to comment on the 2360 series of rules. I was admitted to the Vermont bar in 1982 and the New Hampshire bar in 1985. And since 1987, or thereabouts, my practice has been focused on the representation of parents of students with educational disabilities in Vermont and New Hampshire. I've been involved five or six times in rules revisions like this, both in New Hampshire and Vermont. And this is the first time that I'm aware of where there has not been a collaborative kind of stakeholder process sponsored by either the Agency of Education or the Department of Education in whatever state we're talking about. And I find that very disappointing and unfortunate because just from a historical perspective, whenever that process happens and the stakeholders get together and start to talk about the issues and trade ideas and hash through the language and wordsmith things, there's always a good result that comes out of it, at least in my opinion, there always has been. The opportunity for that has not happened here because the agency has not tried to sponsor a process like that. The last time that it happened in New Hampshire, we, all the stakeholders got together, representatives for school districts and for parents, and attorneys for both sides. And it was so successful that ultimately, we went to the New Hampshire Board of Education when it was done, and we said, hello, everyone, we have agreement on the rules. And that was it. There were other people who commented on things, but essentially, all the hard work was done. So, for me, it's unfortunate that that hasn't happened here, and I'll get to my comments as soon as I'm off of this soapbox. It's unfortunate for two reasons. One, I believe in that process. Vermont has a long tradition of people working things out, people on different sides of legal issues, people on different sides of political issues. And I think that opportunity should always be given a chance. The second reason it's unfortunate is because it leaves a tremendous amount of work for the board to do to try to plow through all the revisions and looking at the agency's draft and looking at Vermont Legal Aid's draft. And it's, to me, if there were a collaborative stakeholder process, the issues would, at the very least, be narrowed.
Mr. Van Booten, before you get off what you call your soapbox, are you aware that the legislature created and the agency has worked closely with the Census Base Funding Advisory Group, which contains several representatives of stakeholder groups, including the Law Project?
Yes, and I've attended most of those meetings.
Okay.
But they haven't, the issues that have been being addressed by the advisory group are so broad and covering all kinds of issues. At least while I was present, we never ever, well, I wasn't a member of the group, but while I was observing, there was never a conversation where we say, let's break down these rules, let's talk about where the problems, problem areas are, and let's look at proposed language, and let's solve these things. It was always about much bigger issues, like, what are we doing with independent schools? Or is 173 going to be delayed? Or do we have consensus about moving forward with the statute? Or what's up with training for school districts? There were so many big issues, we never got down to the rules. That's my take on it, anyway. So, in my written comments, I tried to focus on issues that I thought were most important for me and where I might have a slightly different lens. And so, I have 11 issues, and I'll just go through them pretty quickly. First, let me say that I fully support Vermont Legal Aid's Disability Law Project draft. And I have these comments about certain sections. My issue number one is about the definition of special education services. I agree with VLA that we should adopt the federal language. And the same goes for my next item number two, the definition of related services. We should use the federal language. And for important issues such as those, I think it's important to track federal law. The third issue is what's commonly talked about as adverse effects, where we're looking at which children between the ages of six and 21 should be eligible for an IEP. And VLA is proposing that we eliminate step two, which is an adverse step, an adverse rule, adverse effect step, and simply use the process that's described in federal law and in New Hampshire, which is, does the student have a disability, number one? And number two, does the student need special education and related services as a result? And I think that Marilyn will talk further about that. Related to that is my issue number four, which is...
Mr. Van Booten, another question for you. As you go along, if you are, on each of these topics you've raised, if you agree in whole with the VLA draft, it would be useful, as you do with regard to one and two, very clearly. It's very helpful for us if we know that. If you have suggested changes or additions to the VLA draft, please distinguish those for us. As you go, we're eager to know that you concur or that you have additional changes to the VLA draft. Since we all have the VLA draft and we all will be, of course, paying close attention to it, it's helpful to know if there's any disagreement with it or any additional material.
Okay.
Would you concur with VLA, in your point three, is that in concurrence entirely with the VLA draft?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is it okay if I offer my own reasons for my concurring?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, all right. So, then with the basic skill areas where we're looking at Rule 2362G, the issue with this has been around for a long time in Vermont. And basically, in order to be eligible for an IEP, students need to show that they have an adverse effect in a basic skill area. The problem is that all the basic skill areas are essentially academic, meaning reading, writing, arithmetic, listening, comprehension, things like that. What they don't address are all the functional skills, distinguished from academic skills. So, functional things around social skills, interpersonal relationships, work completion, emotional issues. All of these factors that affect students in school, but they're not part of the formula when we're deciding who needs an IEP. And when Congress, when US Congress reauthorized the IDEA in 2004, they added this functional concept, in addition to the academic, very clearly in several places. And Congress said, emphasized the purposes of the law about meeting the unique needs of the student, preparing them for further education, employment, and independent living. They said that when the evaluations are done, the local educational agency shall use a variety of tools and gather relevant functional, developmental, and academic information. That was new language in the IDEA. And so was the language about IEPs saying that the IEPs needed to include functional and academic performance and goals. So, we must update Vermont's definition of basic skills. It's not just reading, writing, and arithmetic anymore. It's a bunch of other functional standards, too. And as Vermont moves forward proficiency-based graduation requirements, many of those things are functional. When we look at the Agency of Education published a document called "The Vermont Portrait of a Graduate" with performance indicators, that was posted April 15th, 2020, the six areas of performance indicators include learner agency, global citizenship, academic proficiency, that one's academic, communication, critical thinking, problem solving, and well-being. Many of the skills we want our kids to know before they go out into the world are functional. And therefore, we have to address functional when we look at eligibility for special education. I also have a link there to Spalding's Proficiency-Based Learning Systems and a good description that they have about the rationale for that. But I agree here fully with VLA's draft around this issue.
Thank you.
Yes. The next issue is around parental consent. That's number five. And I agree here fully with VLA's draft also. But I want to clarify or just put my own lens on this, which is, because I practice in New Hampshire, too. What happens in New Hampshire is there's an IEP meeting. Everybody talks about what the student needs. This is after eligibility. What services does the student need? And what are the goals and objectives and all of these things? When that's all done, the school district sends the IEP to the parent. And at the end of the IEP is this parent response page that's on page five of my materials. The parent says, I consent, or I refuse to consent, or I partially consent. And the great thing about this is, one, the parents are being asked, first of all, how do you feel about the IEP? And do you agree with it or not? The way it is in Vermont right now, it's left in limbo. It's not clear. The IEP is just sent to the parents. And this is a good process. It's a simple change that I think we should do. And I fully agree with VLA's proposed language about this issue. That's in the VLA draft at 2365.1, .3, .1.
Thank you.
My issue number six is around MTSS. And I fully support VLA's proposed language here. On this one, I just agree with VLA that while MTSS can be a very useful tool and school districts are interested in using it to benefit lots of students, all students, I think it's important to have a simple and short set of policy and procedure points, which VLA does have in the draft. Issue seven, again, I agree with VLA proposed language. My take on this is just that, when, this is about providing parents with critical documents five days before meetings. And that goes for evaluation reports that might be, generally are, complex and need some digesting, or IEP documents. If parents get these before the meeting, as they do in New Hampshire, they have a chance to read them at home, digest how they feel, and then come to the meeting and have an efficient, meaningful meeting with their comments, their thoughts, et cetera. It makes for a much better meeting. And it encourages parental involvement in the process in a very positive way. I agree with VLA language on this point. Number eight, transition services, age 14. Karen Price from Vermont Family Network spoke to that issue in the prior session, and I agree with VLA's language here. It's just about looking at transition skills at a younger age, at 14, if necessary. Point nine, I agree with VLA, VLA's language. This is just about if the IEP team is having trouble reaching consensus about where a student should go to school. The idea is that the, give the team a chance, give the team a chance to make that decision with the parents and the other team members included. And only if that doesn't work, then have the LEA representative make the decision. The 10th item, I agree with VLA language. This is about children who are with disabilities, who are in choice school districts, being able to choose independent schools to attend. And this language is modeled after the New Hampshire Charter School setup, where charter schools are public schools. Parents can choose to place their child in a charter school. And when they do that, the IEP services, if it's a child with a disability, will follow the child. And the way in which it happens is, if the parent says, okay, I'm choosing this charter school, or in Vermont, if the parent says, okay, I'm choosing this independent school, then there's a meeting with a representative of the school district and the parents and a representative of the independent school. And they simply figure out, can the charter, can the independent school provide what the student needs? Or maybe this student needs some speech-language services, and that's not something the independent school generally does? So, how are we going to do that? Will the independent school provide it? Or will the school district, the resident district, provide it? Let's just figure out how that gets done so that the student can still have the choice of the independent schools, like any other student. But the burden of meeting any special education needs is not just placed on the shoulders of the independent school. It works really well in New Hampshire.
Good. Mr. Van Booten?
Yes.
Excuse me, is, you're a little bit over time. Do you think you can wrap up in two or three minutes?
I'm sorry, what was the last thing you said?
Do you think you can wrap up in two or three minutes? Or we could come back to you?
Definitely, I can wrap up.
Good, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So, my last point is about residential placements. The agency has a lot of language around residential placements. And my points are pretty much spelled out in my written submission. But the main point that I want to make is that 16VSA 2958, about residential review teams specifically stated what the state board policies and procedures needed to include. And one thing, if we have a disagreement between an IEP team and the agency or the secretary about whether a student requires a residential placement or not, the secretary is supposed to initiate a due process hearing. This is under 16VSA 2958(c)(1). And then the secretary is supposed to cover the legal fees for the school district and the parents if the secretary doesn't prevail. What the agency is proposing is that the burden for appealing shifts to the LEA, and the LEA appeals to the state board. That is not the process in 16VSA 2958. That's mandatory to be in the rules. And that's it, and thank you for giving me the time.
Just a question for you, sir. On that last point about residential placements. And your concern about the way the appeals is structured by, as you understand it, existing rules.
Yeah.
Then are you in concurrence with VLA in this connection or no?
I am, yes, in concurrence with it. The only thing I added to it, which is not different, it's just additional, was at the very end of my input, I'm suggesting that the rules should contain a provision that no procedures outlined in these rules shall operate to delay or disrupt the residential placement of a child when the need for that placement has been determined by the student's IEP team. But otherwise, yeah, fully in concurrence with the VLA language.
Let me ask a question. If the parent loses, so to speak, in the hearing, did I hear you say that the LEA is still responsible for the legal costs of the parents, even though they lost?
The, no, the problem is that the secretary is not responsible for the costs that the LEA and the parent incur if the secretary does not prevail. That's the problem.
If the secretary doesn't prevail?
Yeah, if the agency does not agree with the child's team that a residential placement is necessary, then the point of the legislature, I think, when they wrote 16VSA 2958, was to say, if the secretary disagrees, then the secretary has the burden of taking the case forward and filing due process, not going to the state board, but going to due process with a hearing officer who has special ed expertise. And then, if the secretary does not prevail, he or she covers the costs incurred by the district and the parents. It just means that the secretary needs to be very sure before he or she brings that kind of a case. Because there should be deference to the IEP team.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Van Booten? I want to thank you, sir. This is a very comprehensive analysis, and I'm sure will be helpful to the board.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to stay online, of course, for the duration of this public hearing. Next, we'll hear from Marilyn Mahusky. Marilyn, are you with us?
I am with you, yes, thank you. If I could, just really quickly, can I address that last issue that Greg was talking about? So, I think the concern that he and I share relative to the way the rules are written is that they conflict with the statute, as the way the statute is written. And the concern is that the way the rule's written is it shifts liability for the secretary filing a due process, which happens very rarely. But if an IEP team, which includes a school and a parent, agree on a residential placement, and the secretary decides, for whatever reason... and the secretary decides, for whatever reason, that's not appropriate, and files for due process, then it's shifting the burden onto the school district and the parents to bear the cost of the due process initiated by the agency. So if the agency's going to initiate due process, I think the point is, they should pay for it, if they lose.
Question for you, just a clarification, Marilyn, thank you. When you say the existing rule makes this provision that you object to, is that an existing rule, or the rule about to be adopted?
So as I understand it, the rule is existing. It's coming from another section. So the agency pulled that rule into the 2360 series, if I'm correct, and Emily could correct me if I'm wrong. The agency pulled that rule into the 2360 series because it deals more with placement as opposed to cost. So that's how we kind of picked up on it, because that's not something I usually pay much attention to. Because we're not, usually we're not, our situations, when I represent people for residential placement, it's usually going through the case review committee or something, so it's a slightly different process.
So as, so in the 2360 proposed revisions?
Yes.
There is now language, did this language exist earlier in the rules, but in a different location?
That is my understanding.
So it's your understanding, then, that the existing rules make this provision, which you believe are inconsistent with statute?
Correct.
And this, and you're saying that those existing, that existing language has been relocated, if you will, to 2360 unchanged, and therefore you are stating, therefore still not consistent with requirements of statute?
That's correct.
All right. Just trying to understand.
No, I'm glad, that's why.
Not, not.
This is Emily.
Plenty of time. Yes, Emily, go.
Just so that your minds are easy, I agree with what Marilyn said as far as how we got here. So no one's wondering about that, I agree.
Okay.
Thank you, Emily.
Thank you, Emily.
So should I go ahead and start then with my?
Yes. We'll be pretty accommodating about time, Marilyn.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that. So the first thing I want to say is that I would echo what Greg said about the participatory process in the past. The last time that I recall, the rules in Vermont underwent substantive changes, and I've experienced this with other agencies as well, is that usually there is a convening of the relevant stakeholders, which is really a different group than the folks who are, who comprise the census-based funding advisory group. They would be some of the same people, certainly the folks, the representatives from VCSCA, some of the teachers that are part of that group, but they wouldn't necessarily be the business managers or the superintendents. And, you know, in the past, it has included school districts attorneys, parents' attorneys, parent advocates, you know, Federation for Families, other groups who are impacted by the rules. And it had been a process where people got together, and as Greg said, hashed it out, and was able, and we were able to resolve a lot of issues. That process didn't really happen here with the 2360 series. It certainly did with the 1300 series, but the 2360 series is a different animal, and the advisory group has not really dealt into the rules. I know there's been some consideration of them, but there hasn't been any substantive conversations about, should we change adverse effects? Should we change something about residential placement? You know, should we add requirements for parental notice or consent? None of those conversations have been had. And so you are a bit at a disadvantage, because you don't have sort of the wisdom of the stakeholders coming forward and saying, you know, yeah, we all agree this is appropriate, or narrowing of the issues where we don't agree. So I just wanted to say that at the outset, and it is unfortunately.
I've got a question there.
Sure.
Why would we have such a strange dynamic? Wasn't that the purpose of the commission?
The advisory group, you mean?
Yes.
Well, the advisory group had, I think, a more narrow charge. You know, it was really focused first on funding rules, which are critical. We can't go forward with this process without changing the underlying funding rules. We still have to grapple with the 2200 series, which is going to be involving the independent schools. And so I'm not sure that there has been, there is a consensus among the group that we need to also revise the special education rules. The agency at the very outset of the process did say that, you know, it was their intent that they would do this at some point. Our point is, they really need to be done hand in hand, is that in order, because Act 173 is not just about changing funding, which is significant, the way the funding is going to change, but there also will be implications in the field. And so that's why we went ahead, the legal aid went ahead, and went through all of the special education rules, because we felt, once they're open, they're open, and it's now our only chance to weigh in and say, look, these are some of the concerns that we've experienced with our clients over the years. And so that's really what you have, is a, you know, a body of proposed rules that are informed by a lot of years of experience and expertise, not just by me, but by other people. I mean, I, you know, I'd love to see that kind of convening of a group, but I don't know that that's going to happen, or that we have the time to do that further. So I just wanted to say that at the outset.
Thank you.
Not, you're welcome. I'm not prepared to provide you yet with my written comments, because I think they're going to be more detailed, and Greg did do a nice job of organizing his, he sent me a copy earlier. But I am going to try and highlight the issues that are of concern to us, that maybe you haven't heard as much about. So, and I want to, just for people who, I mean, I know you've all seen me before, because I've spoken at meetings in the past, but, you know, I just want to let you know that I have been practicing law with the Disability Law Project for over 25 years. Thirty percent of our casework is special education related. We do not get direct funding to represent parents or students with disabilities, so that we, you know, we take our chunk of funding, and it just so happens that 30% of our caseload over the past three years has been education-related, which says to me that there are concerns. We have some very good schools in our communities, and we have some schools that are not as well-funded, or not, and don't, you know, and don't provide the same level of services. There is certainly, as we're noticing with this experience of the pandemic, a fair level of inequity. So with that in mind, one of the themes that we kept in mind as we drafted the rules was that Vermont's rules should mirror the federal rules as much as possible. So there are some specific places where we wanted, that we pointed out that we believe it would be better for Vermont to change its rules to mirror the federal definitions. One, of course, is the definition that is now being proposed, which is the change in the definition of special education services. So in the 1300 series, the agency proposed, and you all are presenting as, under the 1300 series, a new definition for special education services, which is slightly truncated in the 1300 series, but the full rule is now being suggested that be adopted in these rules, in the 2360 rules, and then there's a reference to the 1300 series back to them. And we think that's a really good idea, and we think there's value in having that consistency and that thread of Vermont being consistent with the federal rules. Some of the other places where we have made proposed changes, and so some areas look like there's a lot of red in them, are some of the definitions in the disability categories, which are sections 2362.1. So there are a number of definitions that Vermont has adopted over the years, that the definition for the disability category, so what does it mean to have an orthopedic impairment, or a speech and language impairment, or traumatic brain injury, or visual impairment? Vermont's definitions of those disability terms do not, are not necessarily consistent with the federal rules. And so we think that there is value in carrying that threat throughout. So you see throughout our comments that there are specific places where we are recommending that.
Just a question on that.
Sure.
So in each of the proposed changes with regard to definitions of disability categories, is your language constant with, or concurrent with federal rules in every case?
Yes, yes.
Just a background, would you say, from your knowledge, that other states are by and large in alignment with federal rules with regard to disability categories, or is it all over the map?
I don't know the answer to that question. That's a good question, I don't know the answer to that. I mean, certainly, certainly states have the right to adopt their own rules. They can't make their rules more restrictive than the federal rules.
In any cases, when, under present rules in Vermont, are any of the cases more restrictive than federal rules, in your view?
Well, certainly, the prior definition of special education services was far more restrictive. Yeah, and was definitely. Yeah, yeah. I think that there have been some positive changes in the federal rules. As Greg has said, the rules have, you know, the IDEA was changed in 2004, and so there's been some updates in some of the definitions. And so I think that there is value in mirroring the language of the federal rules.
But, but to my question.
I don't.
You're unable to say that our rules are more restrictive?
I don't know the answer. I'd have to go back and look at each of one specifically. Again, it's been a long time since I've looked at those, John, and I could certainly do that, and if you'd like, when I present my written comments, I can include that information in there, so that you'll have it.
Thank you.
The next issue that I wanted to address was the adoption of an MTSS rule. So we had provided you with a draft, draft language in January, so you had gotten my proposed rule changes, and we included a separate MTSS rule. The statute, Act 173, I just want to be, you know, candid, does not require that the agency adopt a rule. What the statute requires is that the agency develop policies and procedures relative to MTSS. Because of what's happened with the statute, we haven't really had an opportunity, the Disability Law Project, to go back to the legislature and say, we think that this should be a rule and not a policy and procedure. And the reason for that is a couple of things. One is that policies and procedures don't have the same force and effect as do rules. The other thing is, is that there is value in having a rule, and the rule we did share with the several members of the VCSCA, and did get concurrence from them as to the MTSS rule, and they actually helped inform part of the rule. We wanted a very simple rule. We wanted a rule that would give the school districts flexibility in terms of implementing best practices relative to MTSS, but we wanted there to be some accountability. And the accountability would be that the agency adopts a rule, a very simple rule, that requires LEAs to adapt their own policies and procedures, so that there are, there's clear policies and procedures about identification of when a student needs MTSS, establish benchmarks for MTSS, create mechanisms and timeframes for monitoring student progress, informing parents when a student needs that kind of assistance, holding meetings about that, and conveying results of child's progress to the parents. And this is important, is that the parents be involved in the process for determining when a child leaves MTSS, or alternatively, because they no longer need the services, or that there may be a reason to do a more comprehensive evaluation under the special education rules. The legislature seemed to appreciate that there is danger, as evidenced by problems in other states, where states have adopted a census-based funding model, they have adopted multi-tiered systems of support, and school districts have been all over the map in terms of those things I just referred to as identification, evaluation, progress monitoring. We don't want to make that, you know, constrict, what's the word I'm looking for, prescriptive. But there needs to be some sort of guidelines, so that school districts can determine, like, oh, it's working, or no, it's not working, or maybe we need to change things. We are aware of situations where kids get involved in an MTSS at the start of the school year, they're not making any progress by March, and nobody's gone back and taken a look and evaluated and measured. We want to avoid that happening. And one example of that, which came to light about the time that this was being considered by the General Assembly, was a situation in Texas, which had switched to MTSS, switched to census-based funding, and ultimately, the U.S. Department of Education, after hearing complaints, child find complaints, and hearing complaints about the denial of a free and appropriate public education, came in and monitored the state and found that out. In fact, kids were not being evaluated for special education, they were not being identified, they were not receiving services, because the MTSS systems didn't, there was no oversight, there was no guidelines, there was no indication of when a child needed to move from one tier to another. And actually, Texas lost the special as a result of that, which is a pretty drastic step by the U.S. Department of Education. Now, there were some other factors there as well, but the point is, is that I think there is value in having a rule, a very simple rule, that conveys to school districts, you need to think this through, you need to come up with how you're going to make sure you are providing an MTSS that has proper, you know, contours, so that you're actually meeting the needs of kids, you're measuring their progress, you're moving them between the tiers as required, and you're not running afoul of the child find requirements under federal law for special education, which there is an ongoing affirmative obligation that school districts must identify, evaluate, and provide special education services to kids who have disabilities, or who are suspected of having disabilities. And that's where this kind of thing gets a little bit mushy, of, you know, can a child receive MTSS and the same time receive special education? Yes. So, but we also, a child, if they get services early, they may not need special education. Some kids may need special education right off the bat. So it's important that school districts understand that they have obligations vis-à-vis MTSS, and they have separate affirmative obligations via the child find requirements under special ed law. So that's the reason that we're proposing a model policy. The corollary to that, then, is that we are proposing language under the child find provisions, and that's current rule 2360.3H. So we're not changing anything under child find, we're adding something. And what we're adding is just language that says, an LEA's child find obligation applies to students it is currently serving in an MTSS system of support. If the LEA has reason to believe the child has a disability and is in need of special education and related services, then the student must be located, identified, and evaluated. And the student can continue to receive MTSS while the evaluation is pending. This is important, because you could have situations where a response to intervention is being used by the school district, and they're gathering proper data and looking at it, and understanding that the child isn't making the progress he or she should be making. Well, they can use that data, if they suspect the child has a disability, to determine whether or not he or she qualifies for special education, but that can be a 60-day process. So this means that the child can continue to receive MTSS and continue to receive interventions while we're doing a special education evaluation. So those things really go hand in hand. The other thing about having a separate rule for MTSS, and this is something that one of the VCSCA administrators commented to me about, was it's it's important that building administrators, principals, general ed teachers, math, reading, interventionists, understand that MTSS is really about general ed kids and special ed kids. But MTSS doesn't belong in special education. It's really it's really general education. And certainly, kids with disabilities can benefit from NPSS. But it's a different obligation, it's a different oversight, it's a different responsibility and ownership by a school district. So there is value in having a separate rule. And that's why we don't have a number four. It's like, it's really a standalone rule, and there might be someplace else within the board's overall rules where that that rule could land.
Just just a question for you, Marilyn. So you just described a kind of worldview about the role of MTSS and that it's it's aimed at all students. But I didn't hear anything in the language connected to the child find that would 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 assert that. That that codifies that that kind of global perspective. And yet it seems fairly fundamental. So I guess.
I think that's already in statute. So there are two chapters in the statute under part five. I was looking at this yesterday. The chapter on sure, chapter 99 deals with general education and multi-tiered systems of support. The next chapter, chapter 101, is special education. So the 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 first section, chapter 99, really does talk about school districts' obligations to provide is services and supports to kids within the the general ed curriculum. I mean, that's already an important value in Vermont. And MTSS is not a new thing. There's new emphasis on MTSS as a result of the D R, the DMG report and the UVM study. Is that there are natural connections to to shift to census-based funding and at the same time provide flexibilities within the special education system so that struggling kids can get their needs met early. And and by highly skilled teachers with skill in math and reading and some of those core tier subjects. And moving away from para educator support for kids with more significant disabilities who really do benefit from education by highly skilled special educators.
So is it, is it your sense that the statute is sufficiently specific as to that it does not need to be articulated in rule then? I mean, the DMG report will be history before long. I don't think one can rely upon what the DMG report said as influencing what administrators do five years from now.
I'm sure that MTSS will evolve. Best practices will evolve. They should, right? So you're absolutely right. The DMG report would be less relevant five years from now. I think what the DMG report does is it places a new emphasis on on MTSS as an important value within our schools. And the agency, of course, has a lot of guidance relative to that. I think the value of a rule, however, is that it puts some contours on that that system and makes clear the statute makes clear. And and I mean, that is a good question, and maybe I should go back and look at that more carefully, is that school districts remain obligated under IDEA to meet their requirements. MTSS doesn't have the same force and effect of law as does the IDEA. It is, however, in statute as as what school districts in Vermont are expected to do. So I don't know that that we need more than a rule that says we have MTSS, that you, school districts, need to develop your own policies and practices. And by the way, here's a model rule about how you can do that. And that's really what we're we're looking for. And we're also wanting to make clear that by putting the language in in the child find that we did is that administrators understand that there's a connection between MTSS and IDEA. But there are also separate obligations and, you know, that there's overlap, but there are also separate obligations here. Is that making sense?
Yeah.
It is complicated stuff, and I'm sorry, my head's been caught up in it for the last several days. But I will look at that more carefully again and think about the whether there is a need for something that's more specific and confer with others about that. So if there are no more questions about MTSS, I will move on to what Greg touched on, which is the eligibility criteria. And he referred to adverse effect. So looking at rule 2362, this is an area of pretty significant concern among parents and the disability community. It it had, the way Vermont establishes eligibility for special education is much more restrictive than federal law. Greg said there are two gates under federal law. The first gate is, does a child have a qualifying disability? That's those disability categories we were talking about earlier. You know, does the child meet the criteria for other health impaired? Does the child meet the criteria for autism spectrum disorder or learning disability? Yes, we establish the child has that disability. Under federal law, the next question is, as a result of that disability, does the child need special education? The gate. And the and so the focus then becomes, what does the child need? The focus isn't, is there an adverse effect? In other words, does the disability have an adverse effect on the child's educational performance? And there's there's several concerns with that. One, as Greg mentioned, was that the adverse effect looks at the adverse effect on educational performance looks to the basic skill areas. The basic skill areas that are listed in the rules currently are primarily academic, and they're not including functional skills or transferable skills. And as Greg mentioned, that those functional and transferable skills are 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 aligned with the state standards. They functional skills are used throughout the IDEA in terms of what we want kids to be able to do. We want kids to be able to live independently. We want them to be able to learn how to make decisions. We want to prepare them for life, prepare them for work, prepare them for having personal relationships, all of those things that are not academic. And the current rule doesn't allow consideration of that. Or to the extent that it does, to the extent that school districts try, there the result is inequity among districts. So a child who may be found eligible in one district may not be found eligible in another district by virtue of the application of the adverse effect on the child's educational performance. And then the actual rule and definition of adverse effect, which looks at whether or not you're scoring at a certain percentile, 15th percentile. And there are other measures that are incorporated in the federal IDEA for ways to determine whether or not the child would need special education. For example, you can be looking at response to intervention, or you can be looking at other methods that don't look exclusively on, do you meet that 15th percentile? And I'll tell you, I've spent an awful lot of time in an awful lot of IEP meetings. You know, trying to administrators trying to get through that adverse effect gate. And there's very little conversation then focused on assuming the child meets the adverse effect criteria. And well, what does the child actually need? Because you might find that just because the child has a disability, it doesn't mean they need special education or related services. Because if you look at those definitions of special education and related services, do they need specialized instruction? What do those adaptations need to look like? Can that be done in the regular ed curriculum environment or or not? Can we provide supplementary aids and services and so we don't need special education? So we spend too much time on that adverse effect question. And it's not necessary, and it does conflict with federal law. I know some of my colleagues have looked at this issue before. I don't think there are very many states that have this gate two in there like Vermont does, this adverse effect gate. And talking about the equity issue, the kids that it really impacts are kids who have emotional disabilities and kids on the autism spectrum who are higher functioning. Because they may be able to do well enough academically that they don't meet that 15th percentile. But as we know, they still have communication issues, behavioral issues, problems with activities of daily living in terms of being able to take care of themselves, all kinds of things. And we're, you know, a lot of those kids are not being found eligible for special education and are and we're not looking then at, well, do they need special education? Because we're so focused on what do their grades look like and what are their academic skills and not on, well, do they have the functional ability to get by in life? And that's what we should be preparing our kids for. And certainly, we have a lot of policies in the state that that's the direction we want to be going. So so we would like to propose one that that gate two be eliminated. And that D, which is actually the definition for adverse effect, so 2362D be eliminated because it's not necessary if you're going to go through and have just the two gates. The gate one, does the child have a disability who by reason of needs special education or related services? And that you then add to the basic skill areas, functional performance and transferable skills. Because then that really comprehensive view of the child of who the child is and 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 what the IEP team and the evaluation planning team should be looking at when they're making eligibility determinations and writing IEPs. So, you know, that's another example of where Vermont is not consistent with what the federal requirements are. And I know I've used up a lot of my time, so I have a couple of other just quick highlights for you that I want to touch on. One, Greg mentioned this, is children with disabilities enrolled in choice school districts. This is at the end of my draft, but we added this language. And it really does tie into some of the work on 2200 series about kids in independent schools. We have certainly experienced, we've heard from parents, we've talked to parents who whose children have experienced discrimination at independent schools when schools have not been able to meet their needs. And what we're doing is providing options for how schools, school districts, independent schools and parents can work together and come up to solutions and how child's children's needs can be met in the independent schools. We're not addressing the funding aspect of that. We're really addressing the programmatic aspects of that. The other thing that Greg touched on is throughout, we have added and made changes and recommendations for notice and consent to parents. And Greg touched on this, I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. I will put this in my written comments. Parental involvement is an underlying value in the IDEA. Public participation is critical. Parents are members of the IEP team, they're members of the evaluation planning team. And they can't be effective advocates for their children and participants in the process if they don't have the information they need. They're not getting timely notices, that they're not getting documents that they need. And, you know, I don't think it's a school district's intent to not give those things. I think they just fall by the wayside. And so we'd like to see some 14-day notice requirements, written notice requirements. The parental consent language, I think from the New Hampshire example, if parents are checking boxes to say, I agree with this, then everybody knows they've got to go ahead. If their parent says, I agree with A, B, and C, but not D, then, okay, go forward with A, B, and C, and then let's get back together and talk about D. Maybe we can work something out. Or I don't agree at all, you know, and then we know we have a problem. And that, I think, is beneficial to both the school and to the parent to have that kind of clarity, collaboration, and teamwork. And those, again, are fundamental issues in the IDEA. I did talk about the placement issues, the residential placement. I think I provided enough clarification on that. The only other placement issue has to do with language in 2364.3 is that we took out language that this that the agency has in there about what is a placement, that it's not necessarily a specific site, but it's focused on what is the continuum of placements. We support lowering the transition age to 14. And that would be consistent with the federal LEOA, the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. And the VOKE Rehab now has funding available for kids who are 14, who are transitioning. It wouldn't be important for everybody, but it would be important for a lot of kids, particularly those kids for whom they're going to need a lot of supports to get to a point where they can be more independent or move on to later life. The other two quick issues is educational surrogate parents. The state requires that a surrogate parent be appointed to for an individual who's 18, who has a public guardian but not a private guardian. That's not required by federal law. I've been in touch with the Office of Public Guardian. I think you may hear from them on this issue. Is it really creates problems? And it probably conflicts with Title 18. And the only other thing I would say is we added under educational reevaluations, a timeframe, so that's consistent with initial evaluations of 60 days. And the reason for that really is just it shouldn't take 60 days to do a reevaluation if we're just updating and and maybe digging a little bit deeper on a specific area involving your child. So I know I was more than 15 minutes. I apologize. I'd be, I will do my best to try and put this in written format so that it's a little bit easier for all of you to understand. It's hard when we're, you know, Emily did a nice job with her highlighting all of this stuff when she did her roles, but she didn't have as much highlighting and explanation to do as I do. But thank you very much.
Yeah, I think a written summary of your comments would be very helpful. It's a lot to take on, but it's also very I think we want to, we want to understand fully. And wherever you can, I would say it's useful, it's not dispositive, but it's it's informative for the board to understand what customary practice is in other states. Either what might exist as best practice, or perhaps it's virtually uniform or not. That sometimes gives us, it gives us a perspective, if you will. It's not dispositive for us, but it's interesting. Members of the hearing committee, do you have any questions for Marilyn?
I don't. Hi, John. This is Sabina. I don't have a question. I just wanted to let you know that I have arrived.
Thank you. Really glad you're with us. Thank you. Any questions for Marilyn?
If you have
It's Kim. Thank you.
Marilyn, I I want to pose a question that I I may be getting ahead of, but you you've heard me hint at this. One perspective is that when the rules were open, quote, the rules are open. And I'm hearing that from you and others. That is or may be true. But the board does not have unlimited authority to change rules. The 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 board can must write rules within the context or confines of statutory authorization. We are not a legislative body. We do not make, if you will, kind of original policy. And we don't do things that depart from what has been in effect public policy for some time. So and and I'm very mindful of this as the chair of this board because it has come up in the past and it has been a source of some tension in the past between the General Assembly and the State Board. So I I'm trying to walk a different line about all this than perhaps other boards have. I mean, for example, proficiency-based learning was never authorized by the General Assembly. proficiency-based learning was never authorized by the General Assembly in any specific way at all. And yet, a very specific, very resource-demanding initiative was created by proficiency-based learning, which was, some would say was by virtue of the advocacy of stakeholders. And, but in any case, adopted by the State Board without any clear direction. I'm not arguing the merits of proficiency-based learning, I'm simply thinking about the process. And so you can see where this goes.
Yes, yes.
173 had fairly clear and specific purposes. Was, it was to change the methodology for funding and to change practices so as to reflect and support that new approach to funding. It did not have, as its purpose, things like addressing eligibility and definitions and so on and so forth. So, on the one hand, the board, I think, will want to be mindful of its statutory direction and authority, on the one hand. And on the other hand, you as stakeholders quite legitimately argue, well, the rules are open, that means they're open as without limit. I'm not sure where the board, how the board will sort this out when it comes time to see to how and to what extent what we've heard during this public comment period should be integrated into the draft proposals as they exist today. And that conversation frankly, won't happen until after 31st of December.
Right, right, right.
And as Mr. Van Buren pointed out, we are by virtue of the way he's framed the process, where the board is taking on, without benefit of a stakeholder, a give-and-take conversation, a whole lot of other stuff. Well, actually, that wasn't the board's intent. The board's intent was to do what it understood to be the statutory actives of Act 173. So, at some point, I may ask you to brief us on the question of the balance between, when the rules are open, the rules are open. That premise on the one hand, and the other premise being there must be some statutory guardrails that the board is obliged to observe. And how do we reconcile those two possibly conflicting forces? It's not something that we need to answer today. I think, I think as a matter of policy and practice, we want to hear all comments, however far they may exert from existing practice or even statute. It's not our place to, to put boundaries on what is presented to us here. But at some point, the board will probably have to contemplate this, this tension. And will have to resolve it. And that could have the effect of limiting how much, it could, I'm not deciding anything. It could have the effect of limiting how far the board excurs into this territory, none of which is addressed in Act 173.
I hear what you're saying.
I think at some point, the board may retain counsel of its own to this question as well. And certainly, the agency would have its own views, which we would want to hear.
I have another concern in terms of this.
Yes, Bill.
This, this entire enterprise was to help simplify special education. But I hear all of this and what we've just been through. And I'm wondering if we're not by reform, making the thing more complicated and adding more procedural kinds of questions and thus impairing their effectiveness to some degree. And I'm just worried that that might not be on the table.
And what would be the consequence of that? I mean, where would that logic take you, Bill?
Well, where it takes me is we got MTSS, the group that was, that did their reports, the federal requirements, the advocates' reports and so forth. And are we building a system that's more complicated or more simple? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, I guess our job is to build a system that more reflects what the legislature had in mind, as expressed in Act 173. I mean, we, so I don't know that they used words like "simple" or "complicated." I think the, I presume the general goal was to improve the quality and availability of services for children who need them. And the thought was that a different system of funding might help cause that to happen, long as there were practice changes as well. It was sort of a system of changing the incentives, if you will, and changing the practices to reflect a slightly different balancing of incentives. I don't know if that's a fair characterization, but.
Well, the funding system has been made more complicated than it need be for a census-based type of system. And it depends a great deal on whether you've got more money or less money, but that's beside the point. But it's also this addition of new practices that are on top of it, a lot of which have not been really strongly vetted. And I'm just wondering if we're looking at that. I know that's not necessarily the charge, but it's something that we ought to be caring about.
Yeah, that's good, yeah. I mean, certainly, the board's general goal is to enhance the quality and effectiveness of services for all children and to make best use of scarce resources to benefit the most children as a general, as a general objective. It could be that out of this conversation comes a powerful consensus that there really is need for change, but some of it is beyond the ambit of, of Act 173 and its rules. And it could be that the board, together with stakeholders, goes to the General Assembly and says, we need to make these changes. We want your blessing, legislatively speaking, to do so. That's a possible alternative to loading the, the, the Act 173 rules up with other improvements in practice and definitions and regulations that, I suspect there's not much disputing what it is you want to see happen. It's hard to, it'll be, it'll be very interesting to hear the agency's views on these questions. The agency has reasons for all that they do. And so there will be explanations and reasons as to why, why our definitions are different or why we have the adverse effect rule and why that's so important. And I think once the board comes to understand those things, we'll have a better understanding as to, well, was all of this intended by the General Assembly? And if, if we, if that's the case, then we better be careful about changing the rules. But I'm perfectly happy to go to the General Assembly and say, we'd like to change the rules, but we can't do so because we don't have the authorization to do so. So that's, I don't want to get ahead of ourselves. I just want to put it out there, though, that, that the, the board is not, does not have unlimited freedom to change rules. That's as simply as I can state it. We are constrained by our legislative authority.
Yep.
You know that better than I. And so I want you to have an opportunity, though, to kind of brief that for us.
Sure.
And we'll certainly ask the agency to brief it for us. And as I say, we may retain outside counsel as well. Just so that we have a high level of confidence that we're respecting the constraints of statute, on the one hand, and concerns, the very legitimate and very interesting concerns of stakeholders.
Yeah, thank you. No, I appreciate that. It's a big task. Yeah, exactly, exactly, exactly.
Okay, Marilyn, we'll look forward to your written follow-up.
Okay.
And as you know, this doesn't have to be the end.
Okay, good.
Probably won't be.
Well, and I'd be happy to, you know, if, if, as you get more comments, as if you look at the written comments, if you want me to come back again, I'm happy to, to try and help clarify and simplify this in ways that are beneficial.
Well, it certainly, so far, seems like the VLA draft is like the Holy Grail. It, it either is really terrific, or you've done a great job rallying the troops.
Rallying the troops. Maybe a little bit of both. Thank you.
Members of the committee, the hearing committee, do you have any further comments or thoughts about all that's just to inspire?
I'm, it's Kim Gleason again. I guess I'll just say I'm appreciative of the conversation and the perspective. And while I would not be looking for us to overstep our bounds, I think that change in this law has been so dramatic in its effect that even potentially unintended consequences or things that by virtue of the change in the law and changes in laws that predated this one, where updates hadn't happened, might have different effect than they would have and not necessarily have otherwise warranted a reopening of the rules on their own. But we'd be, I think, unwise to look away from updates that should happen, particularly should they have additional consequence under this new law, is sort of my frame of mind around this. So I, I don't look for us to overstep, but I would hate for us not to overturn a stone that has beneath it something that should have been updated and now has an even more substantial consequence.
That's a marvelous nuance, Kim. I think, I hope you'll hang on to that or maybe even write it down because I think it's, it's part of the briefing that we should have as we, as we decide, how far do we go? What do we, what stones do we turn and what do we leave unturned? Your comment about updates, I mean, the 2004 law, that's quite a while ago. But it would be of interest to know, what is customary practice? When federal statute changes, is it typical for rulemakers, whether it's in the case of public safety or education, to change state rules without benefit or legislative authorization? Or do we just simply say, well, the feds require this, we ought to get, we ought to line up with it? I, I don't have the background to know what is usual and customary practice there. But certainly, as you say, Kim, a lot of the rules of the road have changed. And for whatever reason, we've not conformed to those changes. Again, I think the, the agency itself probably can provide a very useful perspective about that.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good. Any other comments or questions about all of this? Marilyn, I think we're at the end with you, thank you. You're welcome to stay on board.
My dog's waiting desperately to get in the house.
All right, take care of your dog. And members of the hearing committee, to my knowledge, those are the only two witnesses we have. Suzanne, anybody in the wings that you can see?
John, nobody has signed up, but there are, there is a person on the call that has not identified themselves, and I'm not certain if they wish to speak or not.
All right, how can we proceed?
What's the last two digits?
You may want to do a roll or ask the participants if they wish to speak.
Yes, then I will ask, is there anybody else on this call who would like to be heard by this committee?
Are the last two digits, can you tell the number of the phantom call?
Is it the eight zero, is it?
I can, I can, yes.
Go ahead. Can you tell us what those are?
Two six two seven.
Okay. Because I think Bill was on this call both by phone and by internet. Is that right, Bill?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out. I'm strictly by phone now, and there would not be a number that would connect for me.
So, it looks like we have no one else who wishes to be heard at this time. I must say, I think this was a very rich and, at least for someone as ignorant as I, a very informative discussion, both from Mr. Van Buren as well as from Marilyn. We have, we, we have a lot to take on here. We would like to keep the hearing open until 7 o'clock, but I'm respectful of committee members' other commitments and time and obligations. Suzanne and I are going to stay live on this call until 7:00. And if any of you want to check in off and on between now and 7:00, it's, I have it about 5:30 at the moment. You're welcome to go away, come back, however you see fit. But we'll keep the call open and available until 7:00. Is that right, Suzanne?
Yes, it is.
Good, thank you. In any case, if you want to stay on, but just mute yourself, that's probably prudent. But Suzanne, will you just speak up real loud? So that if I'm in the next room, I will hear you saying, come to the, to the, your laptop.
Yes, I will.
And say, in case somebody comes on board and wishes to speak to us.
Yes, I will.
All right. Committee members, thank you. Those of you who might leave us, I thank you for joining us. Our next meeting is on the 20th of May. It'll be the third of our three. There'll be a board meeting starting at 12:15, a little earlier than usual, on the 20th of May. And then there'll be a hearing afterwards. In the course of the meeting, we will talk about the continuation of the public comment period, which by then, we hope, will have been made, have been authorized by statute. So then we'll, we'll really know that we can keep going with this.
So, John, and Emily, probably, she would certainly know better than I, but I was on a call that Kate Webb was on. I honestly can't remember which call.
It was the Census Space Funding Advisory Group this week.
Thank you. And I think, didn't she indicate that they had voted it out as well?
They have.
And that's, that's what the chair said at the beginning, that the House committee can concur. Yep. I'm going to look at their calendar since I've got a minute.
Okay.
Thanks, yeah.
So I was, I guess mechanically wondering, thinking about the length of these public hearings and time that we're making and leaving available, if we were to know early enough to warn a shorter timeframe for the public hearing on the May 20th, with also notification that there will be additional hearing opportunities in the fall or, you know, whatever, whatever our anticipated timeline would be. It might save, you know, the dead air or allow people to concentrate their time or to be really relieved from thinking they need to attend to this with providing written testimony or whatever before May. Because at this point, I don't think we've heard any objection. I know we can't get out ahead of the law, but there hadn't been objection to those things. And I thought it was through the process enough, we might have enough warning leadway to change the May, the May 20.
We have made a commitment through the rulemaking process in our rulemaking statement. We have made a commitment through the rulemaking process, in our rulemaking statement, that we would be having these public hearings at these times. So I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm willing to be the only one who stays till seven. Well, so, so is Maureen and Suzanne willing, just, just so that we have fully discharged our commitment in the rulemaking process. Certainly by the 20th of May, it's my impression that the House is going to try to act somewhat quickly on rules, I'm sorry, statutory changes that are necessitated by the COVID-19 pandemic. Even if that does not happen, we should have a conversation on the 20th in which we discuss the non-statutory ways that we have available to us. They're pretty crude, and they're sort of unprecedented, actually, but we could do it. I'm, I'm sure that we could simply communicate without benefit of statute with the Legislative Committee on Administrative Rules, LCAR, which is the body which allows for extensions. But ordinarily, you don't get to talk to the LCAR until you have your final rule. So it's an unusual situation, but we can discuss that if need be on the 20th. If we, if the statute passes in that time, it's a slam dunk. We have until the 31st of December and other, and such additional time as we need.
John, is anybody looking at the fiscal implications of the law itself, plus this slight problem that we're having financially? I'm worried about that, and probably we should spend some time on it. It's preferably related.
That certainly is. I'm, I'm hoping that in our discussion on the 20th, and Suzanne, you might make a note to just mention this to Dan French, possibly in his participation in the discussion on the 20th. We have time reserved for a discussion of 173. We could ask Dan to address the very question that Bill has just raised.
So this is Emily. I've just gone and checked the House calendar. They have a session on Friday, the 8th, but the Act 173 delay bill, which is S343, is not on that calendar.
I see. Thank you, Emily. I'll probably check with Representative Webb. I'll give her a call tomorrow and find out what she has, what she knows about, what the schedule might be. Very good. Any other things we ought to talk about before some of you drift off into the netherworld? Yeah, I think you can sign out. You've done your duties. Thank you. Jenna, I'm going to write to you about asking you to, you and, and Kim to prepare a resolution for Kyle Courtois, who leaves the board at our next meeting.
So that's too bad.
Yeah. So if you would, if you would start thinking about that, I'll send you guys a note.
He doesn't want to, he can't stay on for the summer?
No, I believe the term ends in June. I've already written to the governor to remind him to make a new appointment.
Okay.
All right.
John, good seeing you.
Nice to see you, Jenna. Thank you so much.
Bye.
So Suzanne, we have R, which I think is Marcy, maybe?
Yes, it is.
It is. So I think we're the, the last of them, and I think we can go.